Okay, we're gonna call our regular city council regular agenda, city council meeting into order Monday, April 22nd, 2024. I think we're about seven minutes behind, eight minutes behind. All right, we'll have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Invocation be held, given by Councilman Boone.
Let us pray. I do have to follow along. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon this town. We thank you for this council, Lord. Help them to make the decisions based on your beliefs and your desires and what you would have us to do, Lord. Be with us as we go through our day-to-day activities and lead, God directs us in all that we do. In your precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we want to welcome everybody online and here, present. If I can get someone to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our April 8th meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, we'll have a report from our mayor.
Thank you very much. So today, tonight, last week I did a couple proclamations and tonight we have one for National Correction Officers Week. And this is, of course, the folks that work in our correction department. And this says, "Whereas the safety and well-being of every Fairhope resident or visitor is the utmost importance and the correctional officers who work in our correctional facility dedicate themselves to this critical task each and every day. Whereas in an environment that may be, become intimidating, aggressive, or even hostile, correctional officers are skilled professionals that are trained to maintain composure while preserving safety and property and restraining persons that may be dangerous to themselves or others. Whereas those honorable men and women are hardworking and committed public servants and without their expertise in service, Fairhope's correctional facility would be unable to operate as successfully and efficiently as they do today. Whereas during this week, the City of Fairhope recognizes every correctional officer that serves in Fairhope. We thank them for their essential role they play in helping to protect the people of Fairhope, of the Fairhope community. Now therefore, I, Sherry Sullivan, Mayor of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim May 5th to the 11th as Correction Officers Week in Fairhope." So we are not going to meet again before it is National Corrections Officer Week, so wanted to recognize them tonight publicly and thank them for all that they do. And we'll be getting this proclamation to them so we can do a photo op. Good, thank you, Officer Hammer, for being here. So also just a few more things that I have tonight. As Paige mentioned earlier, we will be, we are celebrating National Volunteer Week this week and thankful for all the volunteers who dedicate their time and service to the City of Fairhope, whether they serve on boards or the volunteer fire department, or through the Welcome Center or the Nick Center. So we have tons of volunteers who give their time every day. Ms. Catherine King is here. Catherine, wave your hand. Catherine is being honored as our Volunteer of the Year for her work with single tax and preserving our history here in Fairhope. She's also been a dedicated museum docent for years. Also, our, just anything that we usually need between her and Gabe at the museum, we know we can call and get whatever historical data we need. So thank you for your service to our community. We look forward to recognizing you this week. Also want to remind, or tell everybody that we're gonna be dedicating Arts Alley on May the 10th, which is again, another long time coming. We have not said all the details of that yet, but it will be May 10th. We'll be putting that information out. Excited to be able to do that, but probably not as excited as the merchants who are adjacent to that project and the people in downtown, because I know it's been a long time coming. Also want to remind everybody that we continue to have those April walking tours that are put on throughout the state. They start at the museum at 10 o'clock, I believe, on Saturday morning. So walking tours, this will be the last one of the series. And again, those happen every April. We also have Girls Night Out before we meet again. That's on May the night, a Thursday evening, where you'll see a bunch of ladies descending upon downtown Fairhope, enjoying an evening out with their girlfriends. So excited again to partner in doing that with the Downtown Merchants Association. Also on May 7th, we'll be doing, I usually do coffee with the mayor. I'm continuing to do that in June, but we are going to do a move with the mayor. And that's going to be at the track.
A what?
Move with the mayor.
Move.
Move. So if you want to bring your tennis shoes and come do a couple laps around the track.
Oh, okay, not like move.
Right, not that kind of move, just walk, just walk.
I thought she was catching a wave.
We're just gonna walk. I might have to get Jimmy's daughter out there to help me with some of the javelin throwing, all that kind of stuff, shot put.
That's right.
But we're gonna be doing move with the mayor. So anybody who wants to come test out the new track on May the 7th, please join me. We're doing that and then we'll have a time for some questions and answers afterwards with maybe a bottle of Gatorade. Okay? And that'll be all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's right. All right, very good. Thank you, Mayor, for that wonderful report. All right, next on the agenda, we will have public participation for Agenda Items 5 through 22. 5 through 22. Agenda Items 5 through 22 only. You have three minutes to speak on these particular agenda items. Please come up and give your name and your address to the clerk. All right, seeing none. Okay, very good. Come on, sir. Good evening.
Fred Nade, 55 and 57 North Bayview. First of all, I want to recognize the council for its efforts on the historic development ordinance. And those efforts include the attempt to reach consensus in this matter. I'd also like to thank Mara Kozinski-Hunter for her leadership and thoughtful way of listening to those that she didn't initially agree with. Thank you, Mara, for all your work on this. I have two requests in connection with this ordinance. The ordinance provides membership of not less than seven. The Enabling Act provides, excuse me, for seven members of the commission. The Enabling Act provides membership of, on the commission of not less than seven. I would request that the council consider increasing, changing this language to say not less than seven members instead of seven members. It gives you, the council, some flexibility in this matter that you don't necessarily have otherwise. Secondly, the enabling statute provides those who are residents of an historic district are qualified to be members of the commission. That is not included in the ordinance. My request tonight is that the council consider amending this ordinance to provide that, as a qualification, those who shall be residents of an historic district are owners of an historic property. Other than that, I think it's severely clearly worded and understandable ordinance. And those are my two requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I address that?
Yeah, so I want to make sure. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
If what we'd be adopting tonight would not, it would not establish.
There would be no district.
Historic district.
Nor district, so that.
Right.
We couldn't accommodate request number two, but request number one, I think.
It's in there.
I think makes very good sense to add.
Yeah. So, but two, we're not there yet. That would be in the next ordinance.
Assuming.
Assuming there is a next ordinance, or not, or whatever. But yeah, it's not this ordinance.
And, sorry, if I may.
Go ahead.
May I, Council President?
Yes, sir.
We specifically removed that provision within prior versions, but we took it out because this ordinance is an establishing district or properties at this time under this ordinance. But certainly, he is correct that you can establish a, it is the language, the enabling legislation says not less than seven members, so you can establish a range. The idea was, they were concerned that they were, they want, didn't want more than seven established as the floor, because they were concerned they were gonna be able to get seven qualified in the first place. And having a fixed odd number is usually the recommendation. But certainly, you have the discretion to make a range if you see fit.
So Ken, I'm not a, I'm not esquire or have any education as far as legal entity or legal ownership as far as law school is concerned. But what's the, so why is that so significant, not less?
Just gives you the flexibility. I mean, if you just say seven, then that's what you gotta have. If you say at least seven, then it could be seven, it could be nine. Or we could, like Chris is saying, we could establish a range of seven to 11. I mean, whatever it may be.
You run into problems where you have an exact number and you get a few people, I mean, four people out there and you don't have quorum. And it helps with quorums sometimes to have some flexibility.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clarified publicly. So Chris, do you have a problem? Is there any issue with that at all?
I have no concern with that. That would be your discretion. I would recommend an odd, if you're gonna pick a number, I'd recommend an odd number.
Not less than seven.
And it has to be a minimum of seven, according to the statute, so.
So we can keep the seven, we just have to add the language, at least.
Odd number, not less than seven.
I think that's a fair, fair compromise.
Fair.
When you introduce the ordinance, you might want to say we got change if somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
I don't mind.
If someone would do that, please. Yes. Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else for Agenda Items 5 through 22? Please come up, give your name, your address.
Yes, thank you.
In three minutes.
My name is Donald DeGuts. My address is 110 Blakeney Avenue, Fairhope. I was a bit confused when you mentioned Items 5 through 7. So Item 5, of course, is the ordinance to establish the Preservation Commission. And I just sat through the working session, which is not public participation, but I did get to listen and raised some issues and questions for me. I am against the ordinance. I don't have an historic house, but I might end up in a district once other steps are taken based on the origins of this, this ordinance. So there was, there's a provision in the ordinance that state tax funds or state tax benefits or credits could be made available. And I wanted to know where those credits are coming from. Is that a fund that, and I think you know probably most about this, but where does those tax benefits come, tax credits come from? Is there a city?
State and federal.
State and federal sources.
Yeah, state and federal.
And opportunities for grants as well.
Okay, and you know that, for fact that there are provisions for that?
Yes, that has been what I've been led to understand from communications with the Historic Preservation Commission Office.
Okay, so during, during the working session, you, you mentioned that you had spoken to their office and that a woman you had spoken to had not yet read this ordinance. But you, you said that we would be entitled to funds if we go ahead with the ordinance and are declared a CLG, a certified local government. But she had not read the ordinance. Are you sure that that's sufficient to proceed? Or should we get that in writing?
If I can just clarify, who is she?
The woman he mentioned, I didn't know if you gave her name. You could, you could answer that.
Sure, so this, the representative from the Historic Commission Office, CLG is a statewide program. The office has a model ordinance that it puts out on the state website for all municipalities. This ordinance largely tracks a lot of the language in that. It's not identical to the model ordinance. And so in speaking with her about how we were changing it from the model ordinance, she felt comfortable that, based on my statement to her about what was different, which was largely removing some things, not adding some things that were contradictory, that it would still be compliance with their program. She, I mean, it's basically a decision that is multi-layered in terms of approving that. And that's something that, once the ordinance of its past is enacted, it has to be submitted for the approval and comment formally.
Okay, well, that's fine. So we don't know yet if it's a qualifying situation or ordinance. And I know that a lot of the discussion was that this would provide for education and funding, money and education. And to that end, with 10 seconds left, I know that we have an Astarte Preservation Committee that is tasked with activities to include public outreach, education about preservation, providing information about state and national incentives for preservation, helping interested residents and business owners secure tax credits and protections. With this watered-down version of this ordinance from the previous versions where the designations and the enforcements are removed, I don't see this any different than what the Astarte Preservation Committee is already empowered to do and to, to recommend to, to the city council. So I'm happy to see that you've recognized a lot of the comments you've gotten and taken out some of the enforcements and all. You commented that this has been going on for 20 years and you're very upset that the Nancy Lewis House was taken down, and I feel for you and for that as well. But I don't see a need for this ordinance based on how it's currently structured, how the city is already thriving, without the need to attract more interest in our historic origins. Maybe 20 years ago when this began, we would have wanted to attract more people. We don't have a problem with that now. Our property values and our commerce and all the developments. And the only, one other thing is Congressman, I mean Congressman, Councilman Burrell said during the working session is, "I don't see what you're gonna preserve, what's there to preserve."
Yeah.
So again, based on the discussions of the working session, and to share that with the public now during this meeting, I'd like to just say, I don't see a need. And I think the Astarte Preservation Committee can do a good job to support the, the needs that we do have.
Yeah, if I may, the historic, what we have now is just a committee. It's just an advisory board. There is no authority with that particular committee. This ordinance actually gives us an instrumentation or a law that could help community members do what you just read. Otherwise, with just the historical, they could not do that. So that's a difference. It's a simple difference, but it is a difference. I wish it could be that they could just stay a committee and we could say we have a historical committee and then taxpayers, but that's not the case. So this one move would put us in the place to where our community can get tax funds or tax credits when they want to, if, if they apply and are so, and they are accepted.
Okay, so again, it, it remains to be seen, based on the conversation earlier, that this money would be available to us without having read the ordinance and had the, the authority. Again, my time has ended.
Thank you.
I have a few more things I would say, but I'm sorry, I don't want to take up a lot of time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
I'm Farrell Anders. I reside at 256 North Bayview Street in a house that's 101 years old. Mr. DeGuts' house is three months old. But we, we were alarmed with the previous version of this ordinance. And I thank the mayor and Councilmember Robinson for giving us an audience to express our concerns. And those concerns were heard, and this draft reflects that, and we appreciate that. We were, we're concerned that this may be kicking the can down the road. And we want to be heard tonight that we are opposed to any restrictions on our rights to do with our house what we want, because it's our biggest asset. And we're getting old and we don't know when we might have to liquidate in short order. And we want to make sure going forward that we're not, our property rights are not infringed upon. And we just want to make that clear now. And we appreciate the, the fact that we were listened to. And this ordinance is step A. And Councilmember Boone, in previous meetings, said, oh, it sounds like this is A, B, C, and D. And other people are saying, oh, this is A. Well, the other ordinance was A, B, C, and D, and this is back to A. And I'm glad that we were heard on that. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Anders. Yeah. So I, I know I can speak for most of the council, because I've spoken to them about this at some point or another. No one wants to put any type of burden on the property rights of anybody in this community. So we're gonna work hard to mitigate those things. I spoke to council earlier, and I'm gonna go ahead and say for hypothetical, say somebody, future ordinance, I was asking a question, well, can we still give the power to the people, as they say? Meaning, can they just say, well, even though we live in this area, can we opt out? Are those potential opportunities that we can talk about, you know, because we never want to put people in that situation. My parents own a historical home in Mobile, in the Dante Square, and I do understand it. It, it's, it can be tough. So what we want to do is try to create some type of, some type of something, you know, where we're not putting that burden on people with their property rights. That's my, that's how I feel about it. So you'll never see me pushing for anything to squeeze a property owner and to put him in a particular situation against their own regards. So I agree. All right, anybody else? Agenda Items 5 through 22. All right. All right. Can someone please introduce the ordinance, Agenda Item number five?
Nope, you got four. You gotta go.
Oh, we're four. Oh, sorry, guys. All right. Council comments. Councilman Burrell?
Yep.
No comments tonight.
All right, Councilman Boone, you're on.
I would like to introduce Dick Scott with the Montrose Historic Preservation Society on a resolution that they have concerning the Henry Stewart structure, knowing it's Tolstoy Park, for moving the structure. Go ahead, Mr. Scott. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman. I would like to read a resolution to you. I want to tell you in advance, it's shorter than an employee handbook. We're gonna be okay.
Well, God bless you.
First of all, I'd like to set the stage just a little bit. There are four people I'd like to call out. First one's not here tonight, he's out of town, that's Kent Nemar. He owns a business park. He owns this building. And through the years, he has personally protected it and cherished it and made it available to the public. It's, we're talking about the Henry Stewart Roundhouse, and it's, it's special. But we do want to give him credit. And he has basically, last year, put out a sign that said, "House for Giving Away, All Takers," or something like that. And we're gonna come back to the rest of that. But the other person that I wanted to call out is Sonny Brewer.
He is here.
He has publicized this through a wonderful book, The Poet of Tolstoy Park. And if you haven't read it, you'll read it. But not only do people here know about it, but around the country, visitors are clamoring to go in and see it. Battleship, of course, number one, but this is pretty close to number two. So, thank you very much, Sonny. The third person, coincidentally, is Mayor Sullivan. Because in September of last year, she came to our group, the Montrose Historic Society, and gave a presentation on what was in the Triangle Park, I believe. And now it's, it's continued on and it's gonna be beautiful. So that's sort of set the stage for this resolution I'm gonna read to you. From the Montrose Historic Preservation Society, a resolution concerning the historic Henry Stewart structure, Tolstoy Park, being enacted this date, April 2nd, 2024, by the officers and membership of the Montrose Historic Preservation Society, that our society supports the contemplated action to save and preserve this endangered historic structure by carefully relocating it to the nearby Flying Creek Nature Preserve a short distance away. This area is a wooded, attractive environment accessible to the public. Signed, Gordon Cooper, President. And if I may, I have a surprise announcement, because yesterday afternoon, another group chimed in. And this is from the Baldwin County Historical Society, to the Fairhope City Council and Mayor Sullivan, Reverend, and the Montrose Historic Preservation Document. At our meeting of April 21st, 2024, yesterday, the Baldwin County Historical Society reviewed the resolution recently adopted by the Mobile Hist-, excuse me, Montrose Historic Preservation Society concerning Tolstoy Park. The following action was taken. A motion was made by Tim Russell, seconded by Alan Samory, and unanimously approved by the Baldwin County Historical Society. To wit, the Baldwin County Historical Society endorses and supports the resolution adopted on April 2nd, 2024, by the Montrose Historic Preservation Society concerning preservation of the historic Tolstoy Park. Signed, Joanne Keller, Co-President. So you have that before you. I would also like to mention that to get it from point A, where it is, to point B, wherever it's going, there would be a cost. And I understand that that can be a mountain to climb. And some of us that are interested have formed a citizens group to help, led by Savannah Wilson. And we are prepared to jump in and do websites, social marketing, talking, whatever, to raise the money for, for this cause, which we feel is an appropriate cause. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Boone?
That's all I've got.
That's right.
Think it's a great cause and we can work hard towards fulfilling it.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind if I just mention?
Yes, ma'am.
I have met with Ms. Wilson about her plan and talked to her about how the city could interact with her as far as taking contributions, putting that in a restricted fund. So I have looked at her plan and reviewed it and thankful that they've stepped forward and are willing to, to be, to participate.
Yeah, I think we spoke about that the last time, to we make sure that we put that into restricted and we would help with that. Yep. All right, very good, very good. I think that's a good cause, me personally, speaking for myself. I, first time I went by and I had to go do a drive-by again to make sure I put my eyes on it, to see exactly what it looked like to move that thing without tearing it up. And it's gonna be a feat, you know, but I think it can be done, that's for sure. I mean, this also goes back to, once again, I guess this is Historical Preservation Day, because that's another example of something that we have historical, that we're trying to preserve. But I do want to give you, ask you guys to look into what that looks like, once you move something historical and you don't have anything historical set up ordinance-wise, can you still get the tax credits or is still, is it still now a historical site? That's something that you guys should look into. And Ms. Mara might have the answers to that, because that was something that came up with the Nancy Lewis home. So that's another reason that I believe that we're headed in the right direction as far as business is concerned.
Councilman Martin, too. If y'all, if the council is in favor of moving, moving that to Flying Creek Nature Preserve, I just want to be able to work with the design team to make sure we find a location for that, check the soil, make sure everything's good, and find a, you know, a good location for it in the park, if that's what the council wishes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking. That's, you're on the right page. And I'm thinking all of that, as far as continuing to have it historical.
Right.
You know, those are all the thoughts that I have in my mind. And so we want to make sure we, we travel that land and make sure we know those answers, you know, before we move forward. Because I've had some dealings with that. I'll let you speak. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just to say that, at the moment, Henry's Roundhouse is on the National Register of Historic Places.
Right.
And I'm trying to find out for sure that if it's moved, does it maintain that National Register status?
That's right. So that's very important, because I had to deal with that with the Nancy Lewis home.
I can address that, if I may, to some degree.
Real quick, yes, sir.
My understanding is that it possibly might not.
That's right. That's, I didn't want to say that.
However, it is still historic. It is still the Roundhouse. It is still unique. And if it moves an inch, you got a problem, and I think we need to move it.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's not really what I was getting at.
The problem is, if you don't move it, I think over a period of time, it will be raised to the, as in gone.
It's gonna be moved.
And it sure won't be historical.
Right.
To anybody.
No, no.
So the point is, if we can move it, at least it will be historical to the community.
That's right. And that's not the point.
Whether or not it's on a registry or not, I don't really have much interest in it.
Well, it, it has a lot of interest business-wise, as far as it's being on the registry or not. And, and I get it. I do know that, that, you know. But I just wanted you guys to know, with the business that I did, and my experiences, that that's a, that's a question that you need to, to answer. So you'll know exactly what you're getting.
That would be particularly important if we were seeking federal funds.
That's exactly right.
That's one reason we're not trying to seek federal funds.
That's right. Okay, very good, very good. All right, very good. All right, now, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you so much. Agenda Item number five is an ordinance. If I can get someone to introduce this ordinance, please.
Yeah, I will introduce the ordinance. And I want to make an amendment when I introduce it to change the selection of the commission from at least seven, or from seven members to at to at least seven, as long as it is an odd number of members.
Odd number, not less than seven.
Odd number, not less than seven, that's correct. And much cleaner.
It's your job. But. Clean it up.
I'm sorry.
Very good.
But no more than?
An odd number, not less than seven.
But no more than, you can keep that where it is, right?
Thirty-three.
Yeah, the enabling statute doesn't have a maximum, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was an odd number, not less than seven. It's your discretion, yeah.
Because, I mean, that'll be it for a council to decide, so.
Okay, very good, all right, all right, thank you for introducing the ordinance. This is the ordinance, the ordinance is to establish a Historic Preservation Commission in the city of Fairhope. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll let that lay over for a couple of weeks, guys. Yes, sir, counsel. Legal counsel.
Counsel President, if I may, just to address one of the comments that was made at the, at the public hearing portion, without, just to be clear, without this ordinance, we cannot get, the city cannot get CLG status.
That's correct.
Period. So what does this ordinance accomplish? If you want CLG status, this is, this ordinance is necessary.
Yeah, I think that was, I think we understand most, I think, I think that's clear. I, I think everybody understands that, that this is the ordinance, that I think we came to a happy road. We listened to the cons and the pros, and we tried to find a middle passage, and I think we came to that. We're not gonna be utopic by any means, but I think it's the closest thing to, to a solution that, that's a win-win for all involved, so. But without this ordinance, we cannot have CLG status, for sure. All right? Very good. So we'll let that lay over, Ms. Lisa and counsel. I don't think there's any urgency to this. All right, very good. All right, agenda item number six is an ordinance, an annexation, Tom Mitchell, Fairhope Single Tax Corporation property located at the State Highway one eighty-one, Rockwell Place Lot One, common area, common area two, Rockwell Boulevard, right of way, and Bushel Drive, right of way, Fairhope, Alabama. Can someone please introduce?
I'll introduce your words.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Mabrel? All right, I think, I'm gonna, just, we'll just let it lay over, simple, cut and dry, Mike. Okay, all right, we'll just let it lie over. All right, we'll just let it lie over to the next meeting. All right, agenda item number seven is a resolution that the city council hereby consents to and approves the acquisition improvement and financing of the facilities constituting a part of the project located in the city, and issuance of the bonds for the purpose set forth in the resolution, and the refunding of such bonds from time to time pursuant to Title XI, Chapter sixty-two of the Code of Alabama, as amended. This is something, some pass-through paperwork that we, as a city, has to do in relations to IHS and Gulf Health, which are the two entities that are applying for a bond in our city, dealing with mobile infirmary, and some additions that they're thinking to do, all right?
Make a motion, approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number eight is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes and selects Corey Martin, council president, to be the voting delegate during the annual meeting of the Alabama League of Municipalities.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, agenda item number nine is a resolution that the city council authorizes acceptance of the grant awarded from the Restore Council Bucket Two Water Quality for the City of Fairhope Stormwater Infrastructure Inventory Project in the amount of four hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars. The city match is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number ten is a resolution that the mayor, Sherri Sullivan, is hereby authorized to execute in contact with Thompson Engineering Water Mark Design for the professional engineering and architectural services for master planning services for the south track of the Flying Creek Nature Preserve, off-road bicycling facilities and amenities, with a not-to-exceed amount of fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I just want to note that, in that second part, it says bicycling facilities and amenities, so it's not just a bicycle. We'll come together to see exactly what this master plan looks like for the collective. All right, very good. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number eleven. That the city council intent is to award and contract to Rollin Construction, Inc., bid number twenty twenty-three, zero three four, for the Working Waterfront and Green Space Project with a bid proposal not to exceed nine million, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Once approval from the U.S. Department of Treasury is received, the contract will also require review and approval by ADCNR, U.S. Treasury, and the city attorney prior to execution. This is Rollin's Construction for our Working Waterfront. I think we bidded this, and then we had to go back and negotiate, per the law, to get it down to where we liked it.
Make a motion, go warn the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, guys?
Yeah, Counsel President, I would like to have maybe the mayor explain, you know, the plus-ups on that a little bit, too. Because that was, that was no small feat, you know, it came in, originally, we had lower estimates, inflation, COVID, yada, 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 and we came up with ten million dollar number, so. We're close to it. And then we went after additional funding.
That's correct. And the city requested additional funding in the amount of three point five million dollars from the Gulf Coast Recovery Council, which was approved, and the city agreed to commit to twenty-five percent of that. So our portion is one point one million dollars, but we did get the additional funds requested, which was, which is huge, because the Restore Council, that's correct, we can have everything done that we originally planned. And the biggest thing I want people to know is that seawall has to be addressed, that'll be one of the first things that are done, the seawall, the fountain, those things, but the seawall in particular has to be addressed.
Yeah, I just want to impress upon everybody the work that you did to go after that additional funding and all the work that Richard's done.
Well, Richard and Nicole, I mean, it was a, it was a team effort, we were back and forth with the recovery council quite a bit, and calling the other mayors and getting them on board, it was good, a lot of good work.
We were blessed to get that, because that money was actually divvied amongst more than us, and so we were blessed, that's a blessing, and so, yep. So that work speaks for itself, thank you, Mayor, for doing that, and Richard, and all involved. All right, so we, we have, where are we, city?
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second. No other discussion, guys, counsel? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number twelve is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of thirty-six-month contract for mat rental services for Centas Corporation, and the rental services is available through the Omni Partners contract, which has been nationally bid, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total estimated cost for thirty-six months will be twenty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and zero cents. This is kind of a little contractual deal, we owed some money, and we gave them another contract to pay our debt, to clean mats.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Now, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, agenda item number thirteen is a resolution that the city council hereby commits the city to provide the additional capital appropriations of up to two million dollars. Approves the amended EDA project budget and the amended EDA project scope of work, and authorizes the mayor to execute all related documents concerning the amendment, EDA grant project, including amending the current A and E professional services contract with Thompson slash Watermark. We spoke on this in the workshop, for all that are watching, we're going through these agenda items, it seems like we're going fast, but we've covered all these items in the work session or workshop. This, this money is just to show identification, when we get ready to do the job, and we put the paperwork in, that we have access to the funds, so we can continue to move forward, is what this is.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? We will continue to seek out funds as well for these additional two million dollars, and it's up to two million. So hopefully, we can find some funds to help us out, to continue this. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen is a resolution that the city council authorizes acceptance of the grant award from the Restore Council Bucket Two Water Quality for the City of Fairhope SSO Mitigation Project for eight hundred and twenty thousand, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, with a city match of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. This is for the purchase of twenty-two generators to be located at key wastewater lift stations to provide continuous public wastewater operations during storm events, and therefore reduce the number of sanitary sewer overflows, otherwise known as SSOs.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion, guys? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution to award bid number twenty-four, zero, four, three, to Consolidate Pipe and Supply Company, Inc., for water treatment plant number one, ductile iron pipe fitting and valves, with a bid proposal not to exceed two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty and six cents. Daryl spoke to us about this, we had a couple, three bids, and this was the cheapest one.
Make a motion, two, second.
All right, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number sixteen is a resolution that the city council approves the selecting or selection pro- selection by Mayor Sherri Sullivan for professional engineering services for RFQ for the repair and painting of the water tank and water treatment plant number three to Krebs Engineering, and hereby authorize Mayor Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
So moved.
All right?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? We're gonna have a pretty tank on thirty-three. We're gonna have a logo and everything on the tank. We're gonna have the pirate, it's gonna be purdy. It's not gonna be a pirate? Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, we got a, we got something on there, just a Fairhope, like the moving, the city seal, yeah, okay. Moving water, something, yeah, okay. All right, very good. I digress again, I apologize, let's keep it moving. All right, I got a motion and a second, guys? Yep, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right. Agenda item number seventeen, resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for a bid CR thirty-three, twenty-four-inch water main extension project with a cost of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty cents, and to award change order number one to Hemfield Construction Company, Inc. The new contract total will be six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, oh, oh, six million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-three and twenty cents. All right.
Make a motion, we approve the amendment, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Our director, superintendent of waters, spoke about this, Mr. Daryl, and this is to make sure that we can go in another direction, I think we're gonna form a T, I think the direction that he called was going west, if we, if we want to, so that's why we have the change order of twenty-five thousand dollars here. Any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number eighteen, a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc., for professional engineering services for RFQ, the installation of a sixteen-inch four sewer main with two lift stations along State Highway one eighty-one with a not-to-exceed amount of one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand and five hundred dollars and zero cents. All right, guys.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
You have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number nineteen is a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with IT consultant Warren Avery LLC for network penetration testing services for a total of eight thousand, five hundred dollars pursuant to a Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one, sixteen, fifty-one, fifteen. It's for our protection, IT.
Move, execute the agreement.
Second.
Have a motion and two seconds, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Agenda item number twenty is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of an Employee Assistance Program, EAP, from Comm Psych Corporation, and authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract for an annual cost of fifteen thousand dollars. We'll pay a prorated version of that, which is around sixty-two hundred dollars.
Counsel President?
Yes, sir.
Somebody make some motion on this, can we change the language in the resolution where it says to execute a contract for an annual cost of fifteen thousand to, to execute a contract for an annual cost not to exceed fifteen thousand? People told us thirteen five, and if it comes in less, I don't want to bump it up to fifteen.
Yeah, it should be, it should be less, but it will increase as you add employees, but we shouldn't be adding that many employees.
So the not-to-exceed makes sense.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So let's.
To approve the procurement with, and to execute the contract for a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Second.
So we have an amendment here, so we have an amendment to the resolution, we have a motion and a second to the amendment.
I don't know that you have to, I mean.
Is that, are we doing that?
With the amendment, so I don't think you have to vote on the amendment, do you, Lisa?
We keep, I, you vote to amend, and?
Well, the resolution was never.
Okay, so, that's technicality, so we'll move forward with that, but in some, you can, yeah, anyway. So motion and a second on the resolution that has been amended. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty-one is a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Pyro Production, Inc., for a professional consultant for an RFQ design and production of fireworks display for the Fourth of July, twenty twenty-four, with a not-to-exceed amount of forty thousand dollars. Ms. Page spoke on this. I have a motion and a second.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
You have a motion to move the business, have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. Is that price staying the same? I think it is, finally, huh? Because every other year, it's went up by ten thousand dollars.
They just cut the fireworks in half.
They just cut it in half, okay. Very good. I'm just glad to see us, that, the market, right, I'm just glad to see that the market is, is that we're. Yes, I think we, okay, that's why we're staying the same, otherwise, because that thing kept moving.
Problem is, I promise you'll have fewer pyros than last year.
Yeah, or some duds. Yes, that's, that's right, very good, yeah, no duds, pyro, guys, no duds. All right, very good, guys. Have a motion and a second, no further discussion? Have we voted on it? Nope, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries, all right. Number twenty-two is an appointment to the Parking Authority Committee by our chief, Ms. Steph- Number 22 is an appointment to the Parking Authority Committee by our chief, Ms. Stephanie Hollahan, by the name of Ms. Kelly Gribbler, chief did not speak on this, I saw Brother Hamlin here, if anybody have any problems with this, please say so, otherwise, we're gonna move forward, moving forward. All right, very good, thank you. Very good, all right. If I can get a motion and a second, guys, to move forward.
Motion.
All right, I got a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, agenda item number 23 is public participation, it's for the good of the order, speak on any topic, you have three minutes.
Good morning, or evening, council members and mayor, I would like to ask if y'all have made any forward movement, I'm so sorry, Stephanie Dernan, 209 Hemlock Drive in Fairhope, thank you for reminding me. I'd like to ask if y'all have made any forward movement on the multiple requests that have been made to move inappropriate library books from the children and teens section to the adult section.
No, ma'am, that's not our deal.
I'm sorry, what do you mean, it's not your deal?
That's not our position, to move the books, we haven't done anything as a council.
I think, to clarify, we looked into the, as council, legal council looked into the issue, the library board was created in 1979, I believe, Marcus, and the fundamental purpose of separating and creating the library board was to take politics out of control of the library, so the council does not have the authority to dictate what the library does from the council position. What the council has the authority to do is appoint members to the library board, outside of that, the council has no direct authority over the library.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for explaining that, when is the next round of appointments due?
December.
December of this year?
Yes.
And are all of them appointed at the same time, or is it a rolling?
It's staggered, it's staggered, as every other board is.
Thank you. Are there any discussions to review the budget for the library and what they are spending their monies on?
The appropriation to the library is discussed every year, and the amount and the necessity and whatnot, so that the amount that's provided for the library is discussed at length every year on budget.
Their entire budget is discussed, and since that's a part of our budget, we discuss that as well.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to make it known that I object to my taxpayer money being spent on inappropriate books. The children and teens section of the library spent $12,000 on materials this past year that's budgeted for books and items in their area, that's a lot of money to be spending on some sections that are inappropriate, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public participation, please? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sue.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second, all in favor, any further discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, motion adjourned.